Anybody?
Full vote.
We have everybody. Okay, wonderful. All right, so I am going to call this meeting to order Wednesday, February 17th at 7:00 PM. And everybody is here, so no need for appointments of alternates. And Rebecca is just signing on, so we're good to go. And if I could have an approval of the agenda motion?
We approve the agenda as presented.
And is there a second?
I'll second that, Tom T.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lanzner?
Yes.
Bill Stein?
Yes.
Tom Tallamini?
Yes.
All righty. And I am just going to hand it right over to the auditor. Hello, Michael.
All right, hello. Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you very much. I'm Mike Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable. And ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit and issuing the reports on behalf of the firm. Heather Seetman, who is a supervisor at the firm, was unable to be on this evening due to some health reasons. But she ultimately kind of oversaw the day-to-day fieldwork. So I'm happy to be here to present the results of the town's fiscal year 2020 audit. Hopefully, at this point, everybody has received a copy, at least electronic copy, of the financial statements, as well as the state's single audit reports. Again, I'm going to go through a presentation covering the scope of work, the reports that were issued. I'll provide some overall financial highlights, make our required communications, and then certainly answer any questions that you may have with respect to the audit. So with that, I think I have sharing capabilities.
You do.
Right? I'm going to share the presentation. Can everybody see that?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. All right, so jumping into the scope of work, again, no real changes from prior years. We did an audit of the town's financial statements. We performed that audit in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Account as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, based on the level of funding that was received and expended by the town, we did also perform a state single audit. The audit was performed in accordance with the OPM compliance supplements and the Single Audit Act. In addition, we also performed integrated bond procedures on the end-of-school-year reports that are required to be submitted by the school district to the State of Connecticut Department of Education. I will point out that this year, we did not perform a federal single audit. That threshold is 750,000, and the total federal awards that were expended by the town totaled approximately 530,000. So one change from prior years in terms of not having to perform a federal single audit this year. In terms of additional services that we do provide, we do perform some non-audit services for the town. So we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance, as well as the related notes. In addition, we assisted in the preparation of the trial balances for the General Fund, Board of Education Fund, the Educational Grants Fund, the School Cafeteria Fund, as well as the Family Resource Center Fund. In addition, we also assisted in the conversion of the governmental fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. In order for our firm to be able to perform those services and remain independent of the town, management is required to oversee those services and ultimately accept responsibility for them. Again, Amy is the town treasurer, and Andy is the school district consultant business manager, ultimately accepted responsibility for those services. And as such, we can confirm our independence with the government. In connection with the audit, we do issue a number of reports. Again, the main report is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified opinions on your financial statements. Again, an unmodified opinion is expressed when the auditor concludes that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with the applicable financial reporting framework. And again, the financial framework that is required to be followed by the town is accounting principles generally accepted in the United States as established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we do also issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. Again, important to note here that we do not actually express an opinion on your compliance with laws or regulations, nor do we express an opinion on the effectiveness of your internal controls. Essentially, during the course of performing the audit, if we identify what we consider to be a material noncompliance with the law or regulation, or a material weakness or significant deficiency in your internal controls, we are required to include it in this report. So again, we did not report any material noncompliance of laws and regulations. And we did report two findings relating to the school district's internal control of the financial reporting. And that has been detailed in the Schedule of State Findings in Question Cost, and that is included in the state's single audit reports. The first finding that we reported was a material weakness surrounding the accounting and reconciliation controls over the school district's general fund operating cash account. Essentially, the bank reconciliations for the school district's general fund operating cash accounts subsequent to the implementation of MUNIS on May 1st, 2020, were not performed. The effect of that was audit entries were required to ultimately reconcile the school district's operating count, as well as the inter-fund balances as of year-end. Again, the recommendation, obviously, that the school district develop and document procedures to ensure that all bank activity is accounted for and reconciled within MUNIS on a timely basis. In addition, we recommended that the reconciliations incorporate a documented review and sign-off approval process. So again, that was reported as a material weakness. The second finding was reported as a significant deficiency, and that's over the accounting and reconciliation controls over the school district's cafeteria fund. Again, the condition that was identified was that certain cafeteria revenues were not reported in the accounting system in the proper period. Specifically, there were three bank deposits that were not recorded as revenue. In addition, grant revenue that was received by the school district in July and August relating to the prior fiscal year were not recorded as revenue in the proper period. So again, the effect was audit entries were required to ultimately reconcile the cafeteria cash account and to properly report revenues for the fiscal year. And again, the recommendation really consistent with the prior reconciliation, develop and document procedures to ensure that all bank activity and grant revenue is accounted for and reconciled within MUNIS on a timely basis. So essentially, as a result of reporting those findings, management is required to complete and submit a corrective action plan to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management in response to those deficiencies. Ultimately, that plan has been completed and has been uploaded to OPM's electronic audit reporting system. In terms of monitoring the corrective action plan, again, we recommend that both the, really, the Board of Education and the Board of Finance monitor the status of the corrective action plan. In addition, the town's auditor will be required to report on the status of the corrective action plan in connection with your fiscal year 2021 financial statement audits. So with that, before I move on, in terms of the presentation, I'll just open it up to any board members if you have any questions regarding the findings that were reported.
Thanks, Michael. Does anybody have any questions thus far?
Hey, Michael, quick question. Do you know roughly what, like, the dollar amounts of the errors were total?
Um, I'd have to go back and take a look at the... I almost lost you there. I'll have to go back and take a look to see what the adjustments of the revenues that were not recorded in the school cafeteria fund. I don't have that offhand. And again, in terms of the actual general fund operating cash account, for that, there was really no reconciliation that was ultimately provided by the school districts. We ultimately ended up being able to audit the information that was provided by the bank. So again, no real dollar amount in terms of an adjustment on the general fund operating cash account. And I will have to get you the amount of the adjustment on the cafeteria fund.
So on the general fund, you said no dollar amount, but basically, nothing was input, so?
Yeah, so if I, if I can try to explain it kind of in layman's terms. Essentially, the Board of Education utilized Phoenix, and that was really a single-entry system. So when they dispersed funds, they would record an expenditure, but they would not record a second side of that entry. So typically, you know, when you record an expenditure, you would have a credit to cash. Prior to the implementation of MUNIS, the activity was picked up by the town through ACU funds. So once the town implemented MUNIS, the responsibility for maintenance of the Board of Education operating count really fell on the Board of Education in terms of them now having a separate ledger. So again, there was no really double-sided entry being recorded when the Board of Education was dispersing funds.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Maureen?
Go ahead.
In going through the financials, looking in the special accounts, there was a $350,000 transfer in to the cafeteria account. Did that have to do with these entries that you made?
No, that was ultimately authorized and funded by the school district. So that was not an entry that was proposed or identified by us.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else right now? Going once, going twice? All right, I do have a question, Michael, but I think I'll save it to the end because I think it's more of a closing kind of summary question, so.
Okay, and that may fall into our required communications piece as well, so. If no other questions, I'll move on to the overall financial highlights. And again, just trying to provide some overall highlights in terms of the town's finances for the fiscal year. This slide goes over your general fund budgetary highlights. Again, your original budget did provide for the use of fund balance the amount of 500,000. Your final budget did include additional appropriations of 150,000, so again, resulting in a planned use of fund balance of 650,000. Your actual net change in fund balance on a budgetary basis was an increase of $1,007,650. Ultimately, that was driven by favorable variances on your property taxes and related interests. Again, your overall revenues were about 673,000 more than budgeted. And then your overall expenditures were about $1 million less than budgeted. Again, you did have, you were under budget across all your departments. Your budgetary surplus of the school district imported a budgetary surplus of about 517,000. And again, we didn't identify any instances of budgetary noncompliance in connection with the audit. This next slide goes over your governmental fund financial highlights. So again, the town is recording combined ending fund balances of about 18.6 million. That was an increase of about 566,000 from the prior year. Of that 18.6 million, approximately 12.2 million was recorded in your general fund. Again, an increase of about 1.1 million from the prior year. Of the 12.2 million, approximately 10.9 million was considered unassigned, and that currently represents just about 26.5% or 3.2% months of your fiscal year 2021 general fund budgetary expenditure appropriations. So again, I know the town has a policy to maintain between at least 10 and 20%, so you are above that policy limit. In terms of your capital and non-recurring fund, that is reporting a fund balance of about 2.3 million. That was a decrease of about 905,000 from the prior year. Your capital project fund had a fund balance of about 509,000, which was an increase of about 3,000 from the prior year. And again, all of your other funds had combined ending fund balances of about 3.6 million, and that was an increase of about 313 from the prior year. And again, no fund balance deficits were reported that need to be addressed from a budgetary perspective. And next slide goes over your government-wide financial highlights. And again, the government-wide financial statements, it really focuses on your long-term liabilities. Overall, the town is reporting a positive unrestricted net position of about $8 million. In terms of your long-term pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, the town pension, net pension liability totaled approximately 7.5 million. That was about 80% funded using a discount rate of about 6.375%. Again, the town did fully fund the actuarial determined contribution in the amount of about 1.3 million during the fiscal year. In terms of your net other post-employment benefit liability, that was measured at about 3.4 million. That is currently about 28.75% funded using a discount rate of about 6.5%. Again, the town did fully fund the actuarial determined contribution of about 399,000. In addition, you also made an additional contribution of 45,000 to that plan. So again, in terms of your overall pension liabilities, the town pension plan has been really holding steady around 80% in terms of the overall funded status. I think your actuarial assumptions are appropriate. The discount rate is certainly reasonable, probably on the lower end of what I have seen in terms of the actuarial valuations, really anywhere between 6.5% and 7%. So again, I think, you know, the pension fund is considered a well-funded plan. In terms of the other post-employment benefit funds, again, that wasn't established very long ago. And so again, the town has made good progress in funding that plan. I think it was about 21% funded about four years ago, and so again, you're up to about 29% now. Before I move on to required communications, again, just provide some overall financial highlights. There's a lot of financial information in the financial statements. Certainly, if you have any questions about any specific funds or balances, I'd be happy to provide my thoughts on that. All right, so with that, I'll move on to our required communications. And again, these communications are required by our auditing standards. The first item here talks about a responsibility under our auditing standards. Although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, again, they are the responsibility of management. All of the information included in the financial statements did come from the town. Again, it's our responsibility to perform our audit procedures and express our opinion on your financial statements. In terms of the plan, scope, and timing of the audit, again, there were no changes in the overall scope of work that was originally agreed upon. In terms of the timing of the audit, again, a 30-day extension was requested from and approved by the state. Factors that ultimately contributed to the need for an extension, again, delays resulting from performing the audit work remotely. Certainly not the most efficient process from an audit perspective. It's much easier to be out in the field. When we have questions, we can interact with town personnel and get answers to those questions right away as opposed to trying to work through email. In addition, we did have delays in getting the, some of the supporting bank statements for the school district accounts. Also, overall delays related to the preparation of complete trial balances for the school district funds, and then ultimately, the related reconciliation of inter-fund balances with the general fund. So certainly, the implementation of MUNIS did cause some additional issues with the audit this year. Ultimately, you know, with both the school district and the town being on MUNIS, it should eliminate some of these issues that were encountered during the course of the audit. But again, it will be important for the school district to ultimately implement MUNIS and perform those reconciliations. Ultimately, all of the reports were filed by the January 30th extended deadline. In terms of significant audit findings, again, we do review your accounting practices and policies. The town did not implement any new accounting standards this year. The GASB, in response to the pandemic, did issue a statement number 95, which postponed the effective dates of most GASB standards by at least one year. So again, they were trying to provide relief to governments in postponing any accounting statements. I will point out that there was a restatement in your financial statements. You will see the restatement referenced in the audit report, as well as disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. The restatement was to the carrying value of the capital assets to remove salvage values that were previously applied to your buildings, improvements, and infrastructure assets. That resulted in an overall decrease in the carrying value of the town's capital assets in the amount of about 8.6 million. So again, this methodology will make it more consistent with how you capitalize and depreciate assets moving forward. Ultimately, that was identified as part of the integration of the capital asset information into MUNIS. In terms of significant estimates and judgments, we are required to communicate those to you. They're really utilized in developing estimated useful lives that are assigned to your capital assets, as well as discount rates that are utilized to determine your net pension and OPAH liabilities. Again, we did deem those estimates to be reasonable, and those do only impact your government-wide financial statements. In terms of difficulties encountered in performing the audit, again, the difficulties really related to delays previously communicated, as well as some additional work which was needed to reconcile the school district's financial information with MUNIS. Again, that primarily related to cash and inter-fund balances. There were no uncorrected misstatements, so any adjustments that we identified and proposed as part of the audit were recorded. There were no disagreements with management. We did obtain a management representation letter. Again, nothing unique that was represented to us by management that we're required to inform you of, and we're not aware of any consultations with other independent accountants. And so with that, that kind of concludes our required communications. So at this point, I'll open it back up to questions.
Yeah, Tom Lanzner, I just had one question. If we had failed to meet the extension of 30 days, what would have happened at that point in terms of any penalties or government sanctions, or anything like that?
So there's no penalties or government sanctions. Ultimately, we would have requested an additional 30-day extension. So OPM has the ability to grant extensions in 30-days increments for six months. So after June, if you can't get your audit done, then they won't approve any additional extensions.
Okay.
And in terms of sanctions, I mean, you know, if you have a 30-day extension, 60-day extension, you know, typically, there's no issues. If you go beyond that, they may require you to meet with their oversight board.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Oh, this is Jason. The delay did have an impact on FY '22's budget process in that we couldn't close out the previous year, so we couldn't open MUNIS to do my budget recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. That is a pretty expensive software package not to be able to use.
Yeah, so I'll follow up. All my communications are really geared towards external financial reporting issues. You know, certainly, I understand, Jason, in terms of internal issues. You know, certainly, there were issues with respect to the delays in the financial statements.
Anybody else? All right, so I guess I'll ask my questions, Michael. So I know you said that MUNIS was a problem with the audit this year, but really, on the town side, not a problem, correct? I mean, we didn't have any problems on our town side. It was...
So the town implemented MUNIS, you know, at the end of April, May 1st, April 30th, I think, was the was the implementation date. And we had no issues with the transition from ACU fund to MUNIS.
Okay. And I guess my other question is, I know it was out there and floating around that you had to do some extra work. Now, are we going to see an additional charge from you guys on the additional work you did with the BOE?
So I will not be looking to provide an additional bill this year. So I have gone back through kind of our hours and work. Again, we did have some efficiencies in terms of overall hours as a result of kind of performing the work remotely. So from that perspective, I wasn't going to propose an additional bill. One of the things that I wanted to have a discussion, you know, moving forward with the school district is ultimately, you know, audit prep for their fiscal year 2021 audit. So if there are issues or we run into these types of issues next year, again, we really should break that out as kind of a separate service and bill for those services separately.
Okay, and so I have two more questions. One goes back, obviously, we're not your only town that you do this for. So looking to you and your knowledge, this isn't the first year. I mean, I think last year was the first year we didn't have a problem on the BOE side and the years before, we always have. So I guess, asking you, from your knowledge, is, from your towns that you work with that seem to be the most successful with the town and the BOE, you know, not having issues, you know, pretty much going pretty good through the audit and not having any delays and any mishaps or whatever, how is it set up? Like, I mean, is the town working with the BOE, doing the finance, you know what I mean? Is there more of an overlap with the town doing some of the BOE work? Is it more successful? Do you know what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, so, you know, typically, a lot of the towns kind of operated the way that you previously operated. So the Board of Education would, again, typically use a single-entry system. And then on the town side, you know, they would ultimately capture all the bank-related activities and then record adjustments to your special funds based on reconciliations with the Board of Ed. Now, you know, I think, given that the Board of Education now has the ability to, you know, basically, maintain their own books, you know, that should ultimately be the most efficient and effective way to manage it. But again, it's going to depend on how they implement MUNIS on their side.
Okay, and I guess my last question is, you said with the corrective plan suggestion that while they're doing their corrective plan and to report it to us. And I guess, what is your suggestion, like, every month, as we do now, getting much more detailed, updated picture of what's going on?
Correct. So from my perspective, from my recommendation, I would, you know, from a board member asks, okay, where are we in terms of reconciliation? So in terms of the operating account, are you reconciled in MUNIS, you know, through, you know, July, August, September, October, November, December, and then kind of monitor that from meeting to meeting? You know, again, ultimately, there isn't a lot of months left in this fiscal year. So again, there's a lot of, I think, work that needs to be done in order to get those accounts up to date in terms of the reconciliations. I will note that, you know, again, from our audit report date, we haven't performed any additional procedures, haven't really had any additional correspondence with management in the school district. So I don't know what progress has really been made to date on those.
Okay, anybody else?
Carolyn, it's Amy.
Okay.
I just, I just want to say, the, one of the problems with the way the old system was, was we were basically doing the same entries twice. Board of Ed was entering their payroll, then we were taking summaries of that and then turning in ours. They were doing their bills. They were doing their bills, we were taking summaries of that and entering in our system. So basically, all their accounting was being done twice. And then we would have to reconcile because things wouldn't match. They would avoid a check and we wouldn't know it. Some other deposit was made that we didn't know about. So unfortunately, even though it was better results than what we got this year from the audit, it was only because more work on the town's audit staff, accounting staff, was really why the Board of Ed was less of a problem in the past few years than it has, than it was this year, was because my staff did the work to figure out what was wrong, to go after them and ask questions. So it was a ton of work on the town finance staff to be doing the Board of Ed's work, in summary, to get it into our system and then tracking down why they weren't reconciled.
This is Bill. Now, with us, us and them both being on Munis, you guys, it kind of works hand in hand now, correct?
Well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to. So so the way the Board of Ed set it up is, we actually don't have access to the Board of Ed accounts.
Okay.
So I actually did an entry for Mike, and it was to an FRC fund. I actually couldn't do it. I did it, but then I had to wait for somebody on the Board of Ed to approve it before I could actually post it. So we have two separate structures set up. They have their number of funds, and we have our number of funds. So I can't affect their numbers, so I can't really do their bank statements anymore. I don't have access to that stuff. Their funds are their own funds, and, you know, even though they didn't have to do a bank statement before, they still should have been keeping track of what was in there, knowing where they were, what they were spending, what deposits they were getting in, their revenue sources.
Right, Amy, it's still going to be important to, there still will be a reconciliation process that will need to be done in Munis between the Town's General Fund and the Board of Education's General Fund. And again, that reconciliation should be done, you know, at least on a monthly basis in terms of, hey, do our interfund balances still agree? And so, again, I don't think, Amy, at this point, you've really been able to do that reconciliation, correct?
No, I don't think they've gotten their activity in there. At last I know, they haven't even gotten their uncashed checks in there from last April.
Hey, Michael, quick question, and I don't know if, you know, you're the right person or if this is for the Board of Ed, but do you have any idea on like what the structure looks like? Who's, how many people are capable and responsible of doing this work at the, you know, Board of Ed? And who normally does it during your interactions? Because I know that we've had people out, but, you know, I would imagine that there's some sort of contingency plan, or I would hope that there's some sort of contingency plan. So when someone goes out, you know, there's someone else who can do that work, so we don't get this far behind.
Yeah, so that I would, I would reference you to have that discussion with the with the school district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Geraldine, it's Noreen.
Yep.
You talked about they had to come up with an action plan and submit it to the state, and that that's been done. Can we get a copy of that? I think you said, you know, the plan, we should be following it to make sure that they're implementing it as they said they would, but I don't have a copy of it to know what they're, what they agreed to do.
I do not have a copy either.
Yeah, Amy, I would just request that from Andy. It's also been uploaded to the state's website. So the state has an electronic audit reporting system where you can basically go and pull up any audit report for any town as well as any corrective action plans that have been filed. So again, that that's another way that you can access the corrective action plan, but I would just make the request from from the Board of Ed.
Anybody else right now at this time?
Geraldine, I have one more question. When you have to submit findings that you had to submit because the significant issues or what does the state generally do with that kind of information? Does it flag us for being watched? Does it just kind of float by?
Yeah, I think it really, I think, you know, again, they're looking for a corrective action plan to make sure that somebody is taking accountability for addressing the finding. Outside of that, I don't think they do too much unless, again, there's question cost or fraud that's been identified. But certainly, you know, if you have the same deficiencies that are being reported year after year, you know, that could flag you for some additional oversight from OPM's perspective. Again, one year of findings, I don't think is going to, you know, trigger that from their perspective. Again, they'll probably follow up on it next year in connection with your next-year audit.
Okay, but it's very important that we not have these things on an ongoing basis. It doesn't look good for us from OPM's perspective.
Correct, yep. And I think, again, you know, you know, once the deficiencies obviously have been identified and reported, you know, it's obviously, I'm sure, you know, from a school district perspective, they don't want to see these deficiencies either. So, you know, hopefully, they're, you know, working on on addressing them.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, sounds good. Thank you very much, Michael.
All right, thank you very much. And again, if anybody else has any follow-up questions, happy to answer those at any point in time. And again, if you just probably, you know, filter those questions through Amy, and then I'll make sure I'll respond.
Yeah, I think the more we kind of read it over again and kind of let it sink in, we probably will have a lot more questions.
Very good, yeah. From my perspective, from the audit, again, the financial statements, your financial position, all those things look very good. And again, from an internal control perspective, obviously, some critical items that need to need to be addressed.
Sorry, trying to unmute there. Thank you again, Michael.
All right, thank you very much. And again, look forward to seeing everybody in person again.
Yeah, that would be nice. Stay safe.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes for regular meeting, January 20th, if we could have a motion for that.
I'll move, we approve as presented.
And is there a second? That was Bill's time. Is there a second?
Tom T., I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, this is Tom. I think the only thing I noticed when it listed the people that were attending last time, David King's name was omitted, but I think he was at the last meeting on the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, good catch.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
It's got me even abstaining on a vote, so.
So you were there.
So that's the only, the only issue I saw with the minutes.
Okay, anything else? All right. So let's approve that with that correction, and those in favor, Karen Christensen? Karen? You're muted.
Yes.
Okay. David King?
Yeah, yes.
Tom Lanzner?
Yes.
Bill Stein?
Yes.
Tom Tellamini?
Yes.
All right, motion clearly passes. Now on to public participation. If there's any public participation, unmute yourself and let us know.
Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Jill Turner of 89 Rockville Road in Broadbrook, and I just want to voice my concern about the termination of transportation starting in the fall of 2021 for the Suffield Boag students from the town of East Windsor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to communications. I did get a communications from Kathy Simonelli yesterday, and unfortunately, I couldn't print it. And my technology, obviously, ability is not good to go back and forth between my email and this because I will lose this Zoom meeting in a heartbeat. So I'm just going to do a brief synopsis. Noreen, you had requested the Munis, and hopefully Kathy, you're here, so if I misrepresent, just let me know. In a nutshell, it was that their reports are still being printed for their BOE in that way, so she did not feel comfortable until she presented it to her BOE and changed the method of reporting, and then she could update us. And also that the superintendent would not be able to attend. So I hope I did that in a synopsis that was pretty successful. If not, Kathy can correct me. But that is all I had for communications. Amy, oh, Kathy, you there?
I am here.
Was that a good synopsis, or did I miss something?
I just want to make sure nobody's misled. We, you know, obviously, the Board of Ed financials are the Board of Ed's responsibility, so we need the reports to be in the format that work for us, which right now has been agreed upon in essentially the format it's in. So that's why I'm not comfortable moving to change anything without discussing it with the Board of Ed, which we will do at a future meeting. I'm not going to promise they're going to want to change things, but I also clarified that all the data in there is from Munis. So it is Munis data. We are keeping the books in Munis since the 1st of July, so just wanted to be really clear.
All right, thank you. And that's all for me, Amy. Did you have anything? No? Okay. Moving on, on to monthly reports. So that is actually you, Amy, so I'm going to mute myself.
Okay, for the town financials, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering. Tax collections are in the, I don't know, 90s? 90%? Almost 90, exactly. Obviously, people who don't escrow their mortgages have been extended to April 1st. So there will be some more collections coming in after the fact. We have exceeded budget in many of our other areas, prior tax revenue and interest in liens is almost at the budget now. I think it's already exceeded in the stuff that came in. I will tell you that this collection is only stuff physically received in the bank before January 31st. And even though we collect into February 1st and February 2nd, and maybe February 3rd, things went into the bank that are not in here because we didn't have the tax collector report prior to my package going out, we only could do what was in the physical bank, so that's what we did for deposits. So there's a difference of the two. If somebody looked at the tax collector report, I think it's about $500,000 more. And that is because that was money that came in between the 31st and the 3rd of February. That was pushed back to January. Of course, we had the same deadline as, and then the storm. So we had the storm Monday, the 1st, and a late opening Tuesday, the 2nd, so that didn't help. And the tax office is short right now. One of their people is out on medical. So I did send the tax collector report today, but we didn't have that ability to look at those numbers and reconcile to her numbers. We just used what was actually physically in the bank. Anybody have any question on that? Let's see, expenditures, I don't think there's anything out there for expenditures that are concerning. I'm going to do a couple transfers, one being so we can pay the consultant that was doing our planning stuff. Some more with savings out of the planner salary that the job was not filled. So our new planner, we did hire a planner, and so he can get transitioned in. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on the expenditures. Oh, you will see, I finally moved out the fire, the EMS stuff, all the grants. Let's see what account it is and what page it's on. It is on page 9A11. And you will see 40,000, $48,000 negative in the supply line. We got $93,000 in December as a second installment of CRF money. So all the money that was in the supply line related to COVID has, was moved over to that grant, including the $9,000 for the call system that Jay uses for the updates for the residents. So there's a large negative there in the month of January, because no matter what month it came in, whether it was July or through December, I did them all as January. Does anybody else have any specific questions?
This is Bill. I mean, I looked through everything. I didn't see anything that stood out to me. And now, yeah, the, even though it was approved at the referendum or at the election, the fire department stays until the new fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
On the, on the fire department thing, this is Jason, on the fire department thing, I am carrying current year fire department expenditures forward in the Board of Selectmen budget proposal right before we pass it on to you guys. That will be the last thing that we take out, and we have identified the current year dollar amounts, the current year fund dollars are located. And we will do one big motion right before our final action on budget to recommend to you guys, so it's crystal clear that we are, we are not repurposing that funding that is coming out. We're going to take a conscious vote and not just spread it around.
Thank you. And I did send that to you guys as long, as well as the Board of Selectmen today, a report highlighting what came out, what lines came out, and then on the very bottom sheet, the total of $547,000.
Any other questions, anybody? All right, thanks, Ms. Amy. We have BLE financials, but I don't see Andy, and as I said, the superintendent is not here. And Kathy, I'm going to guess, no update from you, or?
Well, you guys got the financial report from us, as we, as we said it. So if there's any information on there that you have questions about.
Does any, I know, Noreen, you had the $350,000 question. Is that one you wanted to pose to Kathy or have her reach out to Andy with?
Yeah, that would be good, probably. Within the audits, when you go through the special accounts, the cafeteria, the FRC, all of those senior services, there was a $350,000 transfer into the cafeteria account. And I'm wondering what, where that came from. And where I thought perhaps when the auditor was doing their adjustments between the interfund balances, that that's where the confusion was, but according to him, it's not. So it appears the Board of Ed took $350,000 and put it in cafeteria account, and I would like a little info on that.
I will certainly get you that detail.
Thanks. And just while we're on the Board of Ed, Kathy, I understand your, your the, the issue between the Board of Education having their reports the way they want them. My concern is that what we get is, a lot of times, it floats, it, like, the lines change, they're not in the same place because it's an Excel spreadsheet. The Munis system, we spent a lot of money on it in order to have a cohesive accounting system between the town side and the Board of Education side. And the Munis reports are much more, honestly, they're more user-friendly. We see where things were put, why they were put there, how much was spent in every month, where the balances are, how it's going. And from our side, and considering what came up in the audit, and that we are being told that we need to kind of look a little closer all the time, the Munis reports are a much better way for us to do that. So if you could have that conversation with your board sooner rather than later in order to try to get us those, that would be great.
Well, I will say, I don't want to try to do two different kinds of reports, one for you and one for us, because I think that just leads to confusion amongst things.
I can understand that, but I, I'm not sure, but your board may find the Munis reports more beneficial. It shows previous year's information. It shows previous years' information. It's, it's a little more detailed and a little more what's going to show up in audits and whatnot. So.
Part of the reason right now that Andy is putting it into the spreadsheet and adjusting it is because there's an issues with the HR module in Munis. We've had a number of software issues with Munis on the Board of Ed side that apparently the town did not experience. But we are still working with Munis to resolve those software issues. I mean, one of the things is the HR component is not working properly. So Andy is adjusting, manually adjusting salary information for us so that we can see a truer picture right now. And the Munis report doesn't show that. So that's one of the reasons we're continuing to move in the spreadsheet.
Amy, do we have?
Look at, at how the Munis reports will work for us.
Kathy, this is Karen. Now, doesn't what you're giving us is just a dump out of, out of Munis, right?
Yes. And then Andy, and then Andy is adjusting the, the information that the HR component is not properly handling right now. The total salary lines equal the same as what's in Munis, but he's having to move it around in order to show where it belongs.
Hey, Amy, about to interrupt. I just have a real quick question. Amy? Amy?
Amy's not here.
Quick question. So when you guys have to do, like Kathy said, I guess they're working on their, their HR or whatever. When you guys do stuff like that, like when we do it at work, do you get like ticket numbers for each thing that's requested to be done and updated on the ticket number as it gets done and proceeded with?
We do, but I'll answer the other question first. The other question was, the town's not having that HR problem. First of all, because we don't split our bodies like they do. And second of all, we are not using payroll and HR because we are having our payroll done by an outside payroll agency. We do not have the staff to actually do payroll in-house. So we're not having the same issues they're having HR related because we're not using HR. But the answer is yes, we get a ticket number for anything that needs to be done.
Okay.
Even if something like we were having 1099s when we first printed our 1099s, they had the vendor on the first one, but the next two copies had the town's name in both the payer and the payee. So there was something wrong in both of them. But what they do is they have like development tickets. If something in the actual process isn't working correctly. And then somebody's working on those to make sure that we got them all done and we could generate our 1099s before our deadline at the end of January.
Okay. So that said, we could look at whatever, this HR issue that seems to be happening and not getting fixed. We could look at that ticket number and see an estimated time of when it can get fixed, why it's taking so long, whatever. And we can ask that question to Munis or?
Well, it depends what it is. I mean, it could be as easy as when they did the setup. They didn't set it up the way they needed to to get what they want out of it. You know, when you first set it up, they ask you a zillion questions. Do you want to see it this way or that way? Do you want to see it this way or that way? This way or that way? As you go through setting up, you're answering all these questions. And if for some reason the question wasn't answered in the way that they're trying to use it now, it could be that the way things got set up are maybe not the way they need them to set up. And maybe there's rework that needs to happen to get them going in the right direction. So it may not be a Munis ticket thing. It could be somebody's working with somebody trying to get up to speed where they need to do and get what needs to get done, done.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Okay. Any other questions of Kathy for BOE financials right now? All right. Sounds good. We are on to new business.
Transfers.
Oh, transfer. Sorry. Notice how I went right over that, Amy. No transfers for you this month.
That will be a problem.
All right. So.
The first one is I actually have to have you guys take one back.
Nice.
So on 9C1, I had done a transfer to software licensing for the Broadbrook Fire Department. But we didn't really need it because it was actually a Board of Ed expense that inadvertently got charged to our fire department.
27, we don't need to do.
Right. So we already did it last month or the month before, I think December. Yeah, December it was done. So I don't know if you guys, I'm not going to do it because I don't need it. But I don't know, I, I thought you guys would need to know that I wasn't going to do it. I came and asked you for permission to do it and then I didn't do it.
Okay. So in other words, we put the money there, but we don't need it there. Probably can leave it there for the time being.
I didn't put it there. I didn't do this transfer. Once I found out it wasn't there, Tommy came in as soon as I got your guys' approval. Tommy came in and said to me, what kind of software licensing do we have? I said, I don't know. Do you guys buy Firehouse or emergency recording or some kind of software to, to track your calls and your guys' hours in your incentive program? He goes, no. And I said, okay, let me look into it. And then I found out that it was actually a Board of Ed accounts payable.
That's funny. Um, so do, so in reality, you just need us like to do a motion to void transfer number 27 or?
I guess so. I don't know the process. I don't know how to un.
I know. I don't think we've ever had to untransfer.
But I didn't do it because I didn't need to. So I wasn't going to take their money out of supplies, which they still need to cover an expense that wasn't theirs.
All right. So I would say just to play on the safe side that we make a motion to void our.
Transfer request number 27.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I will move that we void transfer request number 27 for the Broadbrook Fire Department in amount of $5,000 from supplies to software licensing.
All right. And is there a second on that motion?
Yes.
I'm Karen.
Okay. And any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantzner?
Yes.
Phil Stein?
Yes.
And Tom Tellamini?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. All right. So then we're going to go to 9C2?
Yep. And I just have one transfer. And I already alluded to this. We are moving $20,000 from the full-time salary line for the savings while we didn't have a planner to continue to pay for professional services for CHA, which is assisting in the transition to our new planner and helping with planning and zoning EDC stuff that is still going on in our planning department.
All right. If I could have a motion for transfer 29?
This is Bill. I'll move we approve transfer requests number 29 for the planning department in amount of $20,000 from full-time salary to professional services.
Is there a second?
It's Karen. I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantzner?
Yes.
Phil Stein?
Yes.
And Tom Tellamini?
Yes.
Motion clearly passes. And that was that. And I guess I skipped over Jason. Is there anything? I almost skipped over you too, Jason. Any updates for us?
Well, it's budget season. We've started our workshop process. Tom has been at, I think, both of the workshops we've had. Any member of the Board of Finance is more than invited to, to come to any of the Board of Selectmen's workshops. There are more relaxed meetings than a normal Selectmen's meeting. So I would invite you all and encourage your active participation in those. You know, you can participate just like you're, you're on our board. That gives you guys kind of a head start on what the thought process is with what the Selectmen ultimately do to my budget recommendation before it comes to you. It also gives you a chance to ask questions of the presenting departments and agencies. Our next one is tomorrow at 5:30. And that will include essentially town hall departments. And it will continue into our regular Selectmen's meeting the Police Department, Police Commission, Emergency Management and Communications, I think. So that'll be, that'll be a long day and that'll be, that'll be a meaty workshopping experience for us all. Town staff have been extremely focused on setting up the COVID-19 clinic that we're hosting in East Windsor, starting on Friday and hoping to do that prospectively as long as we're able to get vaccine. It's not Board of Finance related, other than there is going to be expense associated with that. And we're just going to have to pay it. But we're using as many sources as we can find to not use town dollars. So there's still Corona Recovery Fund funding available to support that. The town of Vernon is putting in 100% of their clinic costs into FEMA reimbursement. And FEMA has, or Vernon is under the assumption that FEMA will reimburse that at 100%. But, you know, this, as I've kind of had conversations with a number of folks over the last few days, this is, this is like domestic version of the Marshall Plan. You know, that's, that's what we're doing here is just trying to provide a service to people that we can, that they can't otherwise get to. So we've developed a way to make things super easy. Or actually, we flat out stolen away to make things super easy for regular citizens to get access to this. So that's something that's taken quite a bit of time lately. I said in my, when I presented my budget to the, I guess, the town, but officially to the Board of Selectmen earlier this month, I guess, that because of the situation with the fund balance, I'm going to ask the Board of Selectmen and ultimately your board to consider appropriation to pay down debt that the town currently has in the $3.5 million. And what we would do is use that added appropriation to pay off lease purchases that includes the HVAC system at Town Hall, a couple of trucks that are on a lease purchase arrangement through DPW. And also to prepay, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in its entirety, one of the two USDA loans for the sewer extension along Route 140. By doing that, we would accomplish a number of things. We would never incur up to three quarters of a million dollars in interest that the town would otherwise be liable for. We would, and we would open up, using $3.5 million, we would open up a considerable amount of bond capacity to do some projects that are currently just waiting for six years. So by, by prepaying this stuff, we will advance ourselves the opportunity to make investments in the community, in our infrastructure. So that's coming your way. It will come your way just after the Selectmen. If that passes. And the intention is to have that be, that question because of, go to a referendum. We will have, the target is to have that question, if approved by my board and your board, on the ballot for the first budget referendum. We're working on a little bit of a timeframe there. We heard, we had the Board of, the newly constituted Broadbrook Fire Commissioners present Windsor's Broadbrook Fire Department budget to us last. And per the ordinance, we'll have to have a public hearing on that after consultation with them, which happened last night, but prior to our final action on the Broadbrook Fire Department budget. Then that will come to you guys and you'll have to repeat the process. And then that will have to go through a town meeting, town meeting process to also get onto the first referendum ballot separately. It's going to be a little bit of a complicated process-wise budget year, but we have enough time to act accordingly. One of the things that I am going to ask the Board of Finance to consider is to take up the Broadbrook Fire Department question, you know, hold the public hearing, have your deliberations and actually vote in final form on that as early in your process as you can. Because we need, we need sufficient time to notice a town meeting, the town meeting and get the question put on the ballot all for, I think it's May 12th. That's a weeks-long process. So if you're, if you guys don't do that until the end of your process, it will get tight in order to make sure that we don't mess up the timing there. So the earlier in your process, you can do that when that comes to you. That will be in. Trying to think if there's anything else that I should share. There is nothing else that's coming to my mind right now.
Jason, this is Bill. Just a question on the bond. Now, if we pay this other bond, maybe Amy, this is a question for you. I don't know who would answer. If we pay this bond down that we have at whatever interest rate that's at and we're able to do another one with current interest rates being lower, would our interest on the new bond be lower or would it fluctuate with the, whatever, however interest rates work?
Okay. So that's kind of a two-part question. There's actually a third part of the paydown. So $1.4 million is the clean water loan, which is only a 2% loan, but it's 40 years. So we borrowed 1.4 million. We still owe 1.398. And that was in 2015 that we borrowed that money.
Okay.
So that's one I want to get paid off. That one will have that true savings of $750,000. There's also a second clean water loan, but it's for like another $2.5 million. So it, it isn't really of the capacity now with that three and a half to do all the things we want to do. The leases are together about 800,000 and those would have interest savings also. They only have four or five years left on them. But those would be true interest savings. And then the other part is actually defeating the bonds that we have out there for both 14 and 19. So the bond I just did for the 1.1 million for the roof, we would just prepay those and put those in the savings account to pay the bonds as they come due. The refunding, we can't actually do refunding bonds on. So those aren't going to be any savings on those. But what it will do is free up the debt capacity. So the money will be in the savings account to pay those as they come due because they're not callable. But yes, our, our bonds would be at the lower rates that are going on right now for the term of the whole thing. If we issued bonds, I'm going to guess it will be sometime in early next year because we have to have the permission to pay it down to gain the debt capacity. So then we have to then go back and ask the questions about what projects we're going to do of the big long list that's out there, the roofs, the, all different things that are out there. There's a lot of projects still out on that list that never make it to the top because we're not funding enough CNR money any year.
We've had some staff level conversations about what those projects might entail. The objective, and when Amy and I first had this conversation, I'm going to say in December, the, the intention was to get as, as much bang for our buck as we possibly could. So the, the first idea was to say, well, let's just take the $3.5 million and basically escrow it so that we can borrow another $3.5 million. And Amy came up with this better solution, which will free up more than twice that amount for future bond projects without increasing our debt service line. We'll be able to keep that flat and do serious improvements in, in the community without increasing our budget. So we're also trying to figure out how can we maximize state reimbursements? How can we maximize grant matches? How can we actually turn a project that we're going to bond for into a revenue generator? All these things are, we're trying to, to do the staff and work on before we bring to policymaking boards so that we don't have a situation where we have to say to somebody, we've got this great idea, trust us. You know, we're, we're trying to make sure that we have done all of the due diligence and the homework before we come to the, the Board of Finance and to the Board of Selectmen with, with something that somebody's going to be able to punch your 100 holes in with questions that should have been asked already by asking those questions at the staff level and making sure we know what we're, we're playing for.
No, it makes sense to me. I'm, I'm following you.
Anything else, Jason? Or anybody else? Questions for Jason?
Yeah, I didn't hear the first part of what you said, Jason, because you're breaking up. Was it about an upcoming vaccine clinic?
Oh, yeah. The, the town of East Windsor is hosting a vaccine clinic on Friday at the Town Hall Annex. We're, we're getting vaccine supply through North Central Health District.
Okay.
Party Urgent Care is the, the medical director that we're going to be using. And that we're actually partnering with the town of Vernon to do the VAMS administration stuff, which has been the major headache for particularly for the elderly who are trying to get registered for vaccine.
Okay.
So we've got a system that we are cribbing from Vernon where all you need to do as somebody in an eligible pool, if there's capacity at our clinic, all you would need to do is, is call up and say, hi, my name is Tom Lantzner and I'm 66 years old. And we're going to say, Tom, we'll see you at 10.
So can I do that through the phone line instead of VAMS?
All you need to do. All you need to do is call Social Services.
Okay, good, I will do that.
Now, it's full disclosure, Tom, I don't want to get your hopes up. We are booked for, for Friday already, but the hope is to do these as often and as regularly as we can.
Okay, but where would someone see a future one? Is it going to show up in VAMS? Like if you do one two weeks from now?
I believe there will be some allocation in VAMS. We're trying to keep this as local as we can.
Right.
Turn anybody away, but.
Okay, I don't want to hijack the meeting to talk about it, so I'll just, I'll check with Melissa tomorrow. Thanks.
And that's been, that's been a multi, multi-department effort to get that set up. You know, not just between the, the town of Vernon, the town of East Windsor and Priority Urgent Care in the Health District. But, you know, it's been Public Works and Community Services and the Police Department and the Fire Departments and the Finance Department. And, you know, we're, we are, I'm sure I left somebody out. This is, we're shifting a lot of focus onto making sure we can pull this off.
Oh, yeah. Yep, it's a Herculean task.
Thanks. The real danger is you don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. I mean, we don't put something out there that, that is not attainable, but. I have been just so impressed with, with the staff that we have in, in this town over the last seven days.
Right.
Because I went from being very concerned about not being able to pull this off to having no doubt at all that we will be able to pull this off even in a snowstorm.
Great.
Thanks, Jason. Any other questions before we let Jason go?
I'd say the last thing is budget books. For those that don't have them yet, if you want them, I have them at Town Hall. I have a few people that don't have their budget books yet.
Thanks, Amy. Um, Kathy, anything additional you need us to know other than what we already went over?
Well, I had some comments about the audit stuff, but I don't have the details. So I would rather wait and let Chris and Andy talk about that directly. Recollections of conversations and things and processes that we've gone through and issues we've had. But I'd rather let them speak to it more directly than, than I can.
Okay, sounds good. All right, new business, Amy, budget meeting date correction?
Yes, so I had you guys coming on Friday, April 2nd, instead of Thursday, April 1st. On the first calendar I sent you guys. So I had the Thursday right, but I had the second instead of the first. So I just want to make it Thursday, April 1st, so that week we would have March 30th on Tuesday and then Thursday we would have April 1st. That is a Board of Selectmen meeting, that's why there's no, where we would meet. Not that I think any of them will happen in the Town Hall Meeting Room, maybe not till the end of the year, but. So I just need you guys to accept the corrected date so that our meeting isn't on Friday.
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't notice it until I was putting it on your guys' agenda. I went to put it on your guys' bottom of your agenda for the upcoming meetings and I'm like, wait a minute. If it's the 30th, it can't be the second and still be two days away.
So you just need us to make a motion to accept the corrected meeting dates?
Yep.
All righty, so who would like to make that motion?
Motion to accept the corrected meeting date for the Thursday, April 1st budget workshop.
Thank you, that was David King. Is there a second?
This is Bill, I'll second it.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, Karen Christensen?
Can never find it, yes.
All right, David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantzner?
Yes.
Phil Seim?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right, motion clearly passes. Unfinished business of which there is none. Um, and on to board member comments. So I will start with Karen Christensen, anything?
Nothing for me.
All right, David King?
Nope, nothing. You know, obviously, well, actually glad to hear all the stuff that we're doing at the Town Hall, especially with the vaccinations, that's some really good news. It's been a tough year and a lot of snow this year already, so we're able to pull that off.
Definitely. Tom Lantzner?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Right, Phil Seim?
Yeah, this is, just a comment on the audit, I mean, it's, I'm glad to see that our, you know, our town is in good fiscal health by the audit. Obviously, we have a couple deficiencies need to be corrected that sometimes pop up in the years past. And hopefully the plan that the summit will work and will get corrected and have a clean audit next year.
Sounds good. All right, and Tom Talamini?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, sounds good. And number 15 is just the upcoming meeting dates. And we already kind of went over those and number 16 is a motion to adjourn.
This is Bill, I'm moving adjourned.
Is there a second?
Karen, I second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantzner?
Yes.
Phil Seim?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, everybody, stay safe.
You too.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Jill, you still with me?
Yes, I'm still here.
I'm trying to get Geraldine back. I don't know where she went off to.
Who's James Barton?
James Barton is the Warehouse Point Fire Chief.
Oh.
Geraldine's just going to be a second.
Okey-dokey.
Oh, here she comes. Oh, we're still recording.